We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, February the 7th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the role.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mr. Leiner.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here.
If you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag and remain standing for our prayer given by our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, we humbly come before you today, and we thank you for your love and your grace and your peace that is made available to us all. God, we ask for your divine wisdom and guidance here today, for you and you alone know the future and the things that are to come. We ask that you would lead us in the decisions we are part of and that you would give us boldness to honor you. Would you empower every man and woman in this room to use the life you have given them for good? Let us be leaders who follow your example, leaders who love sacrificially, give selflessly, and serve graciously. May we all do our best to impact this incredible county and nation of ours for the better. We ask your blessing on our commissioners, on our county, and on our United States of America. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome each of you here this evening. For those that may be viewing online, we thank you also for your participation in the Commissioners' meeting tonight, which is your meeting. Before we get started, though, I would ask for those in attendance, if you would, please make sure that your cellphones are on silenced, and we would appreciate that, so we would not disrupt this meeting. Commissioners, you received your agenda packet this past week. I hope all of you've had adequate time to review it. Are there any agenda items that you desire to remove or add to tonight's agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. First item we have tonight for the Commissioners is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone who signed up?
Nobody signed up to speak on the agenda topics.
Okay. We just want to make sure we got a good crowd tonight. Again, we appreciate your participation. Did anyone fail to sign up that had a desire to discuss agenda topics? All right, here none. We will move to item two, which will be the consent agenda. There you have the minutes of the January 18th regular session, also the January 24th reconvening session. You have tax releases and refunds, and a cooperative extension, bait foundation grant budget amendment. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull this evening?
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Leiner.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. All right, next we have departmental matters. We'll ask Mr. Leslie Young, our tax administrator, to come forward to report of unpaid 2021 taxes and tax lien advertisement date. Good evening, Ms. Young.
Evening, Chairman Jones, Vice Chairman Booker, and Craven County Commissioners. Thank you for having me tonight. As Craven County Tax Administrator, I come before you tonight in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 105-369, which says in two parts that I'm reporting to you tonight the amount of tax year '21 delinquent dollar amount, and then to also ask for your permission to advertise in the New Bern Stone Journal for Monday, April 11th, '22. The first part, the amount of delinquent tax dollar amount for tax year '21 is $2,559,181.34. And then I ask for your permission to advertise in April 11th, '22.
All right. First, Commissioners, you've heard the report of Ms. Young. Are there any questions before we enter?
I have one question. How much of that $2,559,181 will we get back, approximately?
I'd love to say the $2,559. I will give you some numbers for where we are compared to where we were last year, and I think that'll be a good indicator. We're at currently, we're at $2,559,181.34. This time last year, we were at $2,134,981.13. Of the $2,559,181.34 that we are this year, we have a new tax, so to speak, of GAAP billing that totals $316,466.74 that's delinquent. We have just a little over $100,000 in delinquent tax dollars compared to last year, when you compare apples to apples.
All right. Other questions from the board? Ms. Young, I, Commissioner Smith, did you have something?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Young, I would like to, let's just make sure all of the citizens understand the GAAP billing just a little bit, that that was not an extra tax that this Board of Commissioners enacted, but yet it was enacted by the North Carolina Legislature. If I'm correct, it goes back to, what, 2000 and what?
'17.
'17. So we are, we have just, have got the software in place to begin implementing that in Craven County, but it is required by North Carolina General Statute. Okay? Any questions? All right, here no further questions. Yes, sir.
One more thing, I think, just to, for the public to understand. We have three basic taxes. One is property. That's real estate. That's homes and ground and so on. And then we have personal property. That's boats and tractors and ski, motorcycles, not, no, yeah, motorcycles, et cetera. And then we have the GAAP. So we've got three distinct taxes. And by far, our biggest income comes from property tax. Am I correct on that?
You are correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to make that point. The property tax, and the property tax, people have to pay that. If they don't pay it eventually, there will be a lien on their property. So we should collect pretty much all that, or all but maybe a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear, so everybody understood that there's three taxes, and property is the big one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, you've heard the request of the
tax collector. There's two requests that she has. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask, if you will, please call the role.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Leiner.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Young. Appreciate it. Next, we have Major David McFadden, who will come forward to discuss the vehicle lease. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I appear before you this evening, as I did a year ago. We have a reserve deputy who purchased a law enforcement rated vehicle at his own expense to use in his duties as a reserve deputy, and also for general use by others in the sheriff's office. As same as last year, we do have a vehicle shortage, although we've gotten some new ones in. We've had a difficult time with vehicles, and this vehicle has been a valuable asset to the sheriff's office. As the terms are included in the lease, Mr. Howard pays all expenses related to this vehicle, including providing his own gasoline for the vehicle. We are asking that that lease be extended. We're asking it be extended for three years instead of one year. As is provided in the lease, prepared by the county attorney, this lease can be terminated either party with 10 days' notice.
All right. Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Major McFadden?
Now, I have one question. How many vehicles are we short?
Well, we've just gotten, I think, eight in in the last six weeks. Unfortunately, once we get them in, then we're another two-plus months before they are outfitted for use on the road. That will just about enable us to break even in terms of replacing. We're hot-seating some cars now, and some of the command staff level folks and other administrative folks are driving cars that are just worn out.
Commissioner Leiner.
Sure, I understand that. Good point. You're short. But you're short because they haven't been ordered, or they've been ordered and haven't been delivered. They're not, you're not short because we haven't authorized.
Not at all. No, sir. Chrysler shut down.
Okay.
Chrysler shut down. I think they've already shut down the ordering for this year again, but we were able to slip under the window with the cooperation of the county manager and get an order in. But we went about a year without getting any cars at all.
I just want to make sure the public.
No, sir. You folks have.
We're providing. We just, it's outside our control.
Are there any other questions? All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, we have Facilities, Mr. Gene Hodges, and he's got a group of folks with him. I'll let you introduce everyone.
I gotta, I do have a group of folks. So my first item, I've got Mr. Scott Harrelson here with me, and I've got Zach Chin with Facilities, in case there's any questions. So first item we'll talk about is the 340B pharmacy. On June 7th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners authorized staff to begin the development of a 340B pharmacy to be housed in the Health Department. On August the 2nd of 2021, a budget amendment in the amount of $1,047,250 was approved by the Board of Commissioners that included operational costs, construction costs, capital costs, and design costs related to this project. County staff engaged with the contracted architect firm of Oakley-Carier Architects to begin the design of this project and develop bid documents for contractors. Solicitation for bids was advertised on December 14th and closed on January the 11th. A pre-bid meeting was held on site with seven contractors or subcontractors attending. When bids were open on January 11th, we received three bids. The bid tab was included in your, in your board packet and is shown on the screen. The low bidder for this project was Waters Contracting Company with a base bid of $285,000. It is also recommended that all the alternates be accepted, which will bring this bid to $286,688. Craven County has experience with Waters Contracting and the principal owner, Malcolm Waters. Mr. Waters was the primary contact related to the construction of the adult primary clinic at the Health Department in New Bern and the inclusive playground located at Creekside Park. Additionally, they have functioned as a subcontractor with Barn Hill Contracting on the courthouse rebuild project, and have also done numerous small construction projects for the Maintenance Department. To move this project forward, staff is requesting that the Board of Commissioners accept the bid with alternates from Waters Contracting in the amount of $286,688, $286,688, and authorize staff to execute all necessary contracts and agreements related to this construction project.
All right, Commissioners, you have any questions for Mr. Hodges first?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to review this every year for three years?
That's, that's a Mr.
I thought that's what we had.
That's a Mr. Scott question.
Yes, sir. That, one of the understandings up front was to basically have a profitable or cover cost, and if not, then we would step away from the program. There's no federal requirement to do this program. Usually, it's a revenue generator for federally qualified health centers, and fortunately, with the bids coming in as they did, I think we'll have a little more money freed up for operational, and it'll give us time to get our act together, especially the first year and a half. And with the patient volume we have, we think it will be successful.
Okay. All right. Other questions?
Make a move?
Second. All right, Commissioner Mitchell makes the motion, second by Commissioner McCabe. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to accept the bid from Waters Contracting and to authorize staff to execute all contracts and agreements. Any further discussions? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the role, please.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Leiner.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you. All right, item two.
Next item, approval of fuel center project and related budget amendment. During the deliberations of the FY 2021-2022 Craven County budget, the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to explore the development of a county-operated fuel station. Funds were budgeted for engineering and design services, and the county has been working with Mr. Dwayne Allegood of Vauna Melton, who's here tonight, on this project. Through this process, staff has become engaged with JF Petroleum Group from Mooresville, North Carolina. We have representatives from this, from this group also. JF Petroleum is a provider of fuels and fluid storage management and dispensing and services systems through the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative. The Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative is a purchasing vehicle approved through the state of North Carolina for local governments to utilize that streamlines the purchasing process. All goods and services that are contracted through Sourcewell have been competitively bid and reviewed. Additionally, JF Petroleum has been the supplier of fuel systems for many local governments in North Carolina, as well as state agencies such as North Carolina DOT. JF Petroleum has provided Craven County with a quote of $1,052,239.89 to develop a fueling center near the Judicial Center on Clark's Road. This price includes all the site work, equipment installation, and software for a 24,000-gallon capacity gasoline fueling center. This center will all, will include above-ground tanks, redundant generator power, fencing canopy, and four dispensers capable of fueling two vehicles each simultaneously, so eight vehicles total. A site, a site map sketch was included in the packet for reference. Additionally, the county is responsible for a few items that are not included in the pricing from JF Petroleum. These items include IT equipment, cameras, access control equipment to allow access into the lot gate, 100-foot of fiber-optic cable spliced into an existing line that already runs out there to service the Judicial Center, HVAC mini-split for the control building, shelving and cabinetry for the control building, and installation of a water meter and water line for the site. These items amount to $77,000. And with the $50,000 that the board approved with the budget in engineering and design, this brings, and a 10% project contingency, this brings the total amount of this project that the board, that the board asked us to investigate of $1,279,240. To move this project forward, a budget amendment in the amount of $1,229,240 will be required, and authorization given to staff to execute, to execute the needed procurement documents. Staff's available if there are any questions.
All right, Commissioners, you have any questions?
Yeah, I, it's not a question, but in the past and right now, we are getting our gas, our vehicles from the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are purchasing gasoline through the city.
The reason for this is because in many instances, hurricanes and tornadoes, we've had found it hard to get gas.
That's correct. There, there's usually a rationing that happens with the gasoline, and we will have difficulty getting our vehicles.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
All right. Other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $1,229,240, and to authorize staff to execute all the contracts and agreements. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, yes, sir.
One question. What would be the timing of this? Would you say when?
Right now.
If we approve it tonight, what kind of timing are we looking at?
My goal is that we, the idea is that we will probably be fueling around September or October. There's about a four-month, five-month lead time on the fabrication of the tanks. That's the longest lead time, if I'm still correct. Yeah, that's the longest lead time on this product.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, here none. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Leiner.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Your board.
Commissioners, if you will allow, we have with us here, Mr. Scott Harrelson, and also the chairman of the Health Board. It's kind of a unique opportunity to have both of them here at the same time, Mr. Dwayne Allegood. And if it's all right with the Commissioners, I'd just like, Mr. Harrelson, if you will, just give us an update on the COVID situation in Craven County.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jones. The COVID rates for the state appeared to spike on January the 10th with well over 45,000 cases in a day. Right now, the numbers are coming down across the state, fortunately. In Craven County and eastern part of the state, we were a little behind in the spike. Our spike occurred later than January 10th, and the highest daily average was about 215 cases per 100,000 in Craven. This morning, we were at 165 per 100,000. And I do not anticipate that going back up in the near future. I think over the next two to three weeks, we'll see a decline in the case counts. A few things occurred, though, with the Omicron variant. If you recall, there were a lot of, well, three different setups, the Carolina East, CCAHC, and also StarMed, where you could receive the monoclonal antibody infusion treatment during the Delta wave. Well, during the Omicron wave, they found out that two of the three treatments were not effective against it, so that's why some of those treatment options faded away. And basically, we had the booster shot as the best option to try to avoid getting really sick with Omicron. And we've seen hospitalizations and people being infected that were vaccinated, and some were vaccinated and boosted. But Mr. Jim Davis with the hospital pointed out the distinction that the people that they were seeing on ventilators getting really sick in Carolina East were, were unvaccinated, so they felt like that the vaccinations and the boosters were at least keeping people from getting very sick.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I received the email last week and indicating the number of people that had died from COVID. Can you give us the actual estimation of the number? The number that I saw seemed to be lower than I expected.
I believe the number is 179 was the latest that I recall for Craven County. And I would say that the, the death rate is less than 1%, certainly. We have, you know, at this point, the, the known case count, but we know a lot more people, especially with Delta and Omicron, were carrying the virus or had the virus than actually were verified with a test.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Harrelson, the only thing I'd like to ask you, County Manager, also, if you would, I think all of us, we have been contacted by a lot of different citizens and continue to be, and about a number of things that revolve around COVID. But I think one of the concerns that we have had addressed in recent days is maybe some of our reporting, you know, is there anything that we can do to maybe, I hate to put it this way, but do a better job in showing some of our statistics in Craven County? I don't know whether, you know, we may be doing all we can, but I'd just like to ask if y'all don't mind getting together. We also have Vice Chair Booker, who serves on behalf of the board, on there. And Mr. Allegood, I also would just ask, if y'all wouldn't mind just getting together, just looking at what we're doing versus some other counties and doing some comparisons. And if there is any information that we need to be sharing that we're not sharing, definitely we want to share it. But, you know, if we're doing all that we're supposed to do, you know, I don't look at it every day, so I can't tell you what's out there, but I'd just ask if y'all would.
County Manager and I had that discussion within the last eight hours.
Okay.
And we agreed that we need to get together and talk about it. So we will be doing that.
That's good. All right. Here none else. Thank you for taking the time to speak to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Allegood, always good to see you. Appreciate it, sir. All right. Next, Commissioners, we have appointments. You have there the pending appointments. You see that list there. Are there any nominations for any pending? Here none. We will move to current. We have first the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. The first one is Fort Bama EMS, Mr. Stansel. I think, let me ask this, Madam Clerk, all of these are eligible for reappointment?
They are, and I went through Patty to confirm all of them.
Okay. All right. Having said that, I'd like to ask that, if you would, I'd like to nominate Mr. Stansel. Are there any other nominations from?
Nominate Jeffrey.
All right. We have a nomination from Jeffrey there at the City of Havelock.
And I'll nominate Mr. Smith.
All right. We have a nomination for Mr. Smith from the Friendly Medical Transportation. Are there any other nominations? Here none. We will set these three by acclamation. All right. Next is the Craven Agent Planning Board. The first one is Ms. Dora Jones.
Sir, I'd like to hold on that until the next meeting.
All right. We have asked, Commissioner asked it be deferred. Hear no objection. All right. Next, you have Ms. Lydia Brown.
I nominate Ms. Lydia Brown.
All right. We have a nomination for Ms. Brown. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Here none. Ms. Brown will be accepted by acclamation. All right, Commissioners, you see those upcoming terms expire in February, March. Please take note of them, and let's be ready to act on them. Any other appointments to be considered tonight? Here none. We will move next to County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have several items for your consideration this evening. The first two involve county-owned real estate, surplus property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first item is a parcel located at 1256 Old Brick Road in New Bern with a parcel ID number of 10359002. This is before you for final approval. The board gave initial approval. The Board gave initial approval several meetings ago. We've got an offer amount of $2,200. The bid has been through the upset bid process, and there are no upset bids, so $2,200 is our final number. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure were $2,116.05. This parcel does have a tax value of $13,500. We recommend that the Board consider giving final approval to this so we can close the transaction.
Mr. Chairman, this is up in Vanceboro. I've looked at that a lot, the triangular a lot. It's really not, it's not very sellable. I would recommend that we go ahead and sell.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner. And a second, any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to adopt the resolution for 1256 Old Brick Road. Here no further discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passed. All right, item B.
The second item, Commissioners, is the same procedural posture as the prior item. The property is located at 1250 Old Brick Road with a parcel ID number of 1035037. The initial bid was $1,800. It has been through the upset bid process without any further bids, so $1,800 is our final number. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure were $1,747.94, and the tax value is $12,000. I do recommend that the Board consider giving final approval to this one also.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second. All right, we have the motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for adopt the resolution for 1250 Old Brick Road. Here no further discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passed. All right, item C.
Commissioners, the third item has not been before the Board before, but it involves the consideration and approval of what I would call a multi-party agreement for an EMS director. As many of you know, Dr. Stanley Koontz has been serving in that capacity for some years and is much respected in the area and in the community, and particularly in the EMS field. He actually serves as our EMS director and the same for Jones and Pamlico Counties. He is separately employed by a company called EMP Physicians, and they basically staff and operate the hospital's emergency department. So the structure of the deal is basically all three counties and Dr. Koontz and the company he works for and the hospital, and all the lawyers in the world have been involved also. But the agreement basically is a cost-sharing mechanism. Each county plus the hospital, it's basically chipping in to cover Dr. Koontz's salary for serving as the EMS director. Our annual share is $10,000. There is a possibility that if any expenses of any degree are incurred by Dr. Koontz and he asks for reimbursement, we'd have to pay proratably, but historically, there have been none of those. We'll compliment the hospital and its legal counsel, Cindy Turco, and EMP for working through all these issues and getting a very good agreement for the parties in place. The agreement has been approved by the other counties and by EMP and by Dr. Koontz and by the hospital, so we're basically last in line. It's, there are a lot of moving parts in the deal, but I'm comfortable with it. I believe your management team is comfortable with it, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I've been working on this with the county manager and attorney and with the hospital, and this gentleman is an outstanding physician. He is involved with any heart attacks, bleeding, anything you can mention, and is really recommended by the other hospitals.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here none, and the motion is to approve the EMS director agreement, delegating the chairman or clerk aboard the authority to execute and deliver the agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passed.
That concludes my report. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, next, Commissioners, we have the petition of citizens. This is general topics that are not on our agenda tonight. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks to the Board of Commissioners. We will have a timer. We do ask each one that will speak to please, if you will, to try to put your comments within that three-minute timeframe. And Mr. Vice Chair, we have anybody signed up?
We have four people.
All right, the first one?
First one is Alan Harrop.
All right, good evening, Mr. Harrop.
Thank you. Good evening. Chairman Jones, Vice Chairman Booker.
Good evening.
Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I'll make sure I stay within the three minutes, do my best. I don't have a specific issue.
Your address.
Oh, my address, yes. I'm a resident of Craven County, been a resident for 10 years. My address is 909 Kara Kara Drive, that's down at Fairfield Harbor. The reason I wanted to speak to you tonight, I don't have a specific issue to deal with other than I want to talk generally about resolutions. I know that over the past year, a couple of resolutions, and the reason I know that is I drafted both of them, were brought to the County Commissioners on topics that you probably normally have never had to deal with before, and I'm sure that that was a surprise to you and perhaps something that you were prepared to deal with. The reason that happened is we are, and I believe that there's, a recent poll showed in the country, there's a lot of concerns by citizens of various parties that the country's going in the wrong direction. And there are a number of issues that are hot-button issues for people. Mandatory vaccines being one of them, mask wearing, things going on, critical race theory, other issues in the schools, all of which bear on Craven County. Now, I know that we have, for example, with mask mandates and possible transgender sports participation in the schools and things, that probably the Board of Education has the ultimate authority over that. However, the problem comes for the citizens is when there are government entities that are not appearing to do the things that they prefer. Now, you could say, well, we could wait until the next election and vote for other people, and that is certainly something that needs to be addressed. However, some of the issues are more immediate of concern. For example, people losing their employment because they don't get a vaccine, children having to wear masks when there is no scientific evidence at this point that masks do anything for those children except negative things, and there's plenty of studies to support that. So the people are very frustrated. So therefore, that has prompted me and several other people to draft resolutions. Now, we don't know, or I don't know, when I draft a resolution, what your limits are, what you can do, what you can't do. So I would certainly just want to let you know that we would appreciate, at least like you've done, review these resolutions. If there's anything within your power to correct issues that you consider to be handled in an incorrect way, and you take action, that would be deeply appreciated. However, there may be issues out of your direct authority, however, that you might be willing at least to express a position on. And that would, I think, be very meaningful to our constituents to know that their elected body in the form of the Commissioners do recognize a problem and at least are taking a position with it.
Thank you, Mr. Harrelson.
That's the end of my comments.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, thank you very much.
All right, next, Mr. Vice Chair.
Next person to speak would be Bertha Bush.
If you will, please give your address.
Good evening. My name is Bertha Brimage-Bush, and I live at 160 Blunt Brimley Drive in the Perrytown Community. I am the oldest daughter of the late Melissa Harvey Brimage. My mother and I have been working hard on trying to get the Blunt Brimley Drive road paved since 1975 and 1976. Mr. Steve Tyson and his brother, Mr. Chuck Tyson, came out to Melissa Brimage home trying to help in getting Blunt Brimley Drive road paved. The late Senator Jean Preston requested, four years before her death, that Blunt Brimley Drive be looked at and to pave it. That year was 2007. The late Melissa had hoped years to get the dirt road she lived on in the Perrytown Community southeast of New Bern paved. It was impossible in bad weather, and Melissa had asked every politician who had ever asked for her vote to deliver on her one request to get Blunt Brimley Drive road paved before she died. Melissa, her late friend, Mary Schwartz, had an article printed in the June Sun Journal newspaper saying, "Quest to Pay Blunt Brimley Drive: Near Success" on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2010. Since the year 2010, some of the citizens that lived on Blunt Brimley Drive have been calling the planning department and DOT. Our Berthe B. Bush would love to see Blunt Brimley Drive road paved before I die. I am 78 years young. This is my wish, and I hope and pray it will come true. I thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, the next speaker would be Brenda Henry.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Brenda Brimage-Henry. I live at 125 Perrytown Loop Road, grew up on Blunt Brimley Drive, but I do own property still on Blunt Brimley Drive. Now, I'm going to take a different twist tonight on that. I'm going to say that our current Commissioner is the best Commissioner we've ever had. And I would call him a miracle worker. Just recently, I replaced a call to him. I've heard him speak at the precinct meetings, and we've been here before, but it was prior to his time. But we had excellent news delivered tonight, and that there is a possibility that we are moving forward. As my sister indicated, we have been working on this since the early 70s, and we had hoped to get an update tonight, and we did. So we are going to leave confidently, knowing that things are on the move with great expectations. So to those of you, and I know I won't talk to the audience, so I'm going to look this way, who don't have the same Commissioner, shame on you and better luck. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, next, Mr. Vice Chair.
The last name on the left is Mr. Jeff McAllister.
Good evening, thank you. Jeff McAllister, 628 Lily Putt Drive. My concern, as long, as well as the residents on Lily Putt Drive, Brys' Court, and Sherman Point, is water pressure fluctuation. Our nominal pressure used to be 55 to 60 pounds, but we monitored it, and we see it drop to 35 to 40 pounds during the day, evening, whenever. And this is taken on the outside faucet of multiple homes with no water running, stagnant state, with a pressure gauge, so we're actually looking at the water system feeding us from Brys' Creek Road. Let me give you a little history. Craven Water County District proposed 10 water tanks within the area when they first put the system in. Currently, they have nine. The new water treatment plan came online at Havelock in 2017. Erklein Florence, excuse me, hit us in 2018. We lost the pump at Lawson Creek. The pump supplied water to Brys' Creek Road, which supplied our streets. A temporary pump was installed coming from Cove City. The water company was concerned in 18 about the water pressure and flow on Brys' Creek Road. So during that hurricane, and when they engineered the temporary pump and control scheme, they requested engineering to do a study. And so they did a study on Brys' Creek Road, the pump, the pipeline, and their recommendation was to install a new tank, water tank and pump, to secure the water pressure on Brys' Creek Road. A second one was install a new pump on the property where the Craven County Maintenance Supply Shop is located, and that would be an alternative spot instead of Lawson Creek. But to get your funding from FEMA, you had to put it back in a floodplain, so that's where it went back in there. The other one was to replace the water line with a larger one. In May 2021, the pump at Lawson Creek, the temporary one, changed its flow direction. We were getting supplied from Cove City, so we were on the discharge side of that pump, so our pressure was pretty stable. Now, we're on the suction side of that pump, heading back towards Cove City, and so our pressure system fluctuates quite a bit. This is also along Brys' Creek Road. Their pressure fluctuates along with other branched roads. So now, we're getting a proposal for 90 new homes, 90-plus new homes built on Prairie Town Road, there's 25, Wall Turkey Road, approximately 67. This is going to put another load on Brys' Creek piping system. So within the Craven County Water District, the water system was not put in for fire protection. State water, the state fire protection code requires a minimum of 35 pounds to fill a fire truck. When Craven County put in the water system, it was put in for potable water only. There are hydrants around the area, water, fire trucks can pull water from it, but there's no guarantee that they're going to make the minimum pressure. Currently, with the new construction, there's no infrastructure charges for any of these new homes for contractors. Now, I know your main concern is property tax revenue, but I hope you have enough money in your budget that if our water pressure drops too much, that we're not looking for an assessment in our area, we're looking for a solution. And so with that solution.
Your three minutes is up, so if you can wrap it up.
You bet. So in proposal is, is we'd like to try to put some type of monitoring device on Brys' Creek line and the spurs on that line, pressure device, monitor the pressure, so we can accurately put into the engineering. This should have been done on their engineering study, and it may have been done, I don't know. But we can do that and consider long-term to install a water tank and a pump in the area.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right, anyone else signed up? All right, thank you all for your attendance and for those that spoke to the Board this evening. All right, next we have the County Manager's Report, Mr. Vice.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I'm going to be brief tonight, because I know we have a couple other items to take up. I wanted to report as a reminder to the Board, on February 21st, after your regularly scheduled meeting, we'll have a work session. I do anticipate it lasting through the, at least through the lunch hour into the afternoon, so we'll have lunch here for the Board. We'll get an agenda out next week with the regular agenda and go from there. Also, last thing, I want to report, we did kick off the budget process with the department heads last week. We had a great meeting where we gave them the mission and the goals and all those things for the budget process. Departments will have between now and the end of February to put their budget requests together, submit to the budget team. We'll take it for a month or two and work with those departments and the outside agencies that we fund to work to get you a proposal in May, where we'll begin our process with the Board of Commissioners. And I said that was the last thing, but actually one more, I made a note. I wanted just to, kudos to Commissioner Mitchell and Jeff Wood for a great Naval X kickoff event. I know many of you were there. I thought it went really well. It was excellent having the Secretary of Navy here, but I'm sure they may comment on that later. But that's all I have, sir.
Okay, any questions for the County Manager and the Board of Commissioners? All right, here none, we'll move to Commissioners' Report. Commissioner Leiner?
Sir, nothing.
All right. Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Commissioner McCabe?
Oh, yes, I just have a few things here. The other day, I did attend the funeral for Jack Parker. He was a longtime past president of the National Fire Association, and also he was the past chief of the New Bern, West New Bern Fire Department. And I'm- And the funeral was held at the Temple Baptist Church here in New Bern, and I attended that along with Sheriff Chip Hughes and I, and also our District Attorney, Scott Thomas. Also have here too, on the 2nd of February, myself along with the head of department in New Bern, we going to issue the M905 mask, mask at the Hollow Community Center at 125 Goret School Road in Havelock, from time from 12 to 2:00 PM, and we going to pass out masks until they're all gone. So, hope everybody and my district of five can be able to come and receive a mask if they desire to do so. You have a choice there. And also too, the last thing I have here, I did attend the Board of Directors' Meeting in Raleigh this past week, and it was a successful meeting, it was nice. I'm not going to go through the whole detail, but I did have copies for each Commissioner here and the press release to read at your legion. So, when the meeting's over, we take a break, I will give each one of them a copy of the Director Report and the Press Release. That's all I have. That's your-
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mark.
Mr. Harrelson had given us what the state and the county had in the way of COVID. I can give you, from the hospital being on the Board, what we had this past weekend or today, 52 COVID-positive patients and inpatient. Out of that 52, 21 of 52 had some form of vaccination. 18 people were let out of the COVID this weekend. One COVID patient was in an intubator, and one person was left out of isolation. Two people did expire. One was 94 years old and one was 82 years old due to conditions before they got there. They were from a nursing home. And that's all I have to report, sir.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mark. Vice Chair Booker.
Yeah, I just wanted to, for those who don't, who may have known him, make an announcement that saddened that Mr. Marshall Van Winkle passed away this past week. Marshall was an incredible guy. He, I was a friend of his for the last 20 years. His nickname was Mr. Model T, and he had an incredible collection of vehicles. He was known all over the country. He was a great judge of antique cars. If any of you have attended the antique car shows that have been in downtown New Bern, he was the Chairman of all those shows. He was the guy that put them together and made them work, and he'd been ill. His wife passed away this past year, and he'd been ill for a while, and I think Marshall was about 90 years old, 89 or 90, and he's going to be missed. His funeral is tomorrow. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Two things I'd like to bring before the Board of Commissioners. I had the opportunity last week, one of the good things, I think, about our job, and that's what it is, we work for the folks of Craven County, and that is to be able to go and speak with schoolchildren. And last week I had that opportunity once again, done it on a number of occasions. Had a little girl who came to the podium and asked me a question. She said, "Could I ask you to do something for me?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am." She said, "Can you go back and talk to your Board of Commissioners about bullying in our schools?" And I promised her I would do that, and so, you know, she was about, I'd say about eight, nine years of age. And so, folks, it is prevalent in our society and our schools today for this young lady to recognize that, and so, as I promised her, I would bring it to this Board's attention and it's duly noted for the minutes, in that it is a concern to all of us as parents and as citizens of this county. Also, I'd like to make mention, I don't believe I have stated this for the record, but I would like for it to be spread upon the minutes of the Craven County Board of Commissioners. Former County Commissioner Bill Harper passed away. He served this Board of Commissioners for a number of years. Our Board sent to his family a letter recognizing his service to the citizens of this county. I signed it a few weeks ago. I do not think they have had a service as of date, I haven't heard of anything, but Bill, I'll just tell you a little story about, Bill was not too fond of my grandfather back in when Granddaddy was serving. And, you know, when I was young, he was somebody that, you know, I didn't get along with too well because he didn't like my Granddaddy. But I will have to tell you, you know, as the years went by, you know, our relationship, we come to an understanding that we're going to agree on some things and we're going to disagree on others. But I will have to say, he fought for the citizens of this county, for what he believed in, and I appreciate his service to the citizens. And so, Madam Clerk, if you will, please spread that upon our minutes today. Anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners under Commissioners' comments? All right, hear-
I would like to make a comment. I apologize for not doing it at my appropriate time, but I would remind all of you, all of us, that this is Black History Month, and I would that we would take a look at activities going around in the community and show some interest. You might learn something. I do recall last year that some of us said they had never heard of Juneteenth before. You won't learn these things in the school because it's prohibited to be taught, but if you go through these activities, you learn about our struggles, our successes, and how far we've come and how much we appreciate even how far we've come. There's been several people, local folk, that were in the struggle. You need to know that, and they were not all just black folk. We have come a long way. We need to know our history and appreciate what we've done, where we come from and where we are. So, I think we need to take a look at that and appreciate who we are and what we're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that. All right, again, we want to thank all of those that came tonight for your attendance to this meeting. We are going to take a recess, but after we come back, Commissioners, we'll take about a 10-minute recess. When we come back, we do have a closed session, and that closed session is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A and 3, to consult with an attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion that we would go into closed session? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We will take a 10-minute break and come back in the closed session.